Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, once again we assemble ourselves in the chambers of city government to do city business. We ask you, Father, for wisdom, guidance, understanding, and ordnance, and direct our path in this meeting, that we arrive to an desert results that is pleasing in your sight. We ask thee blessing and our blessing in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join the pledge. A pledge related to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Just break the rule, please.
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1. Jay Step, Ward 2. Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Taff Ren, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Julie. I do want to point out, I want to thank Councilwoman Hodge for joining us via phone tonight. And Councilman Step will be joining us during the meeting. He had a little league baseball game with his team advancing in the playoffs that we could blame Tom and Eric Ration for not working around, but that's okay. Nobody got the comedy. That's all right. It happens all the time. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from last meeting. And council, you've had an opportunity to look at those meetings from, those minutes from October 15th. Now would be time to make any edits if any are necessary, and if there are none, a motion would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Wilson, get us started tonight, if you would, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, council, this is the second reading of the post-construction storm water management for new development redevelopment. We have no changes from last month. And once again, this is a requirement from Georgia EPD as well as municipal North Georgia Water Planning District. And we at Public Works do recommend approval of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mr. Wilson on this item? If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Wade.
Thank you.
We have a series of first readings of ordinances. Mr. Menino, if you will get us started with these particular ordinances that are in the alcohol ordinance section.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. The Assistant City Attorney in conjunction with the police chief was proposing to strengthen some security aspects of the alcohol ordinance. The first dealt with the section that had gambling in it. And what this does, it allows if a patron or an employee or a license holder is convicted of a gambling offense, it will affect their alcohol license. It does give the Alcohol Control Board the authority to pull, revoke, or suspend their license. The second actual proposed text amendment deals with security cameras for package sales establishments. They're already required in there. This actually just strengthens, strengthens the requirements in there. It allows the police department, if other crimes did occur, they are allowed to utilize the footage on the video camera. And the third requirement requires cameras now in establishments that have on-premise consumption of alcohol. Currently, that's not in the alcohol ordinance. With that, the Alcohol Control Board did recommend approval of all three of the proposed text amendments.
The, is there a punishment already in the ordinance, like for instance, if a convenience store is supposed to have cameras and don't?
Yeah, there's a, there's first offense, second offense, third offense type violations already written up in the ordinance.
And then going back to the first one regarding, does it give the, the police the authority to pull? Or they, can they suspend it and then they come before the Alcohol Control Board?
Well, if, in dealing with gambling, if a patron and an employee of the establishment or the license holder in an establishment that serves or sells alcohol is convicted of any gambling, if there's any conviction dealing with gambling, this will revert back to their alcohol license if it was establishment that sold alcohol. And then that allows them to, like I said, either revoke their license, pull their license, or go through the process which is in place for first, second, or third offenses.
And all three of these were at the request of our police chief. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for Randy on either one of these three items? Thank you, sir. These are first readings. We'll take these up for a final vote at our first meeting in December, which will actually, no, excuse me. This will be our second meeting in November, getting ahead of myself. Next item is relative to purchase orders. Mr. Porta.
Yes, Mayor. This item will clean up some of the language that is in our purchase order requirement and code ordinances. It also, it's a recommendation by myself to increase what the department heads can bring purchase without going to the city manager, which is from $500 to $2,500. And anything up to $7,500 could be approved by myself or the Assistant City Manager without city council approval. And anything over $7,500, which is currently $5,000, would go for the city council. This is the first reading, but I do recommend these changes to this ordinance.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Thank you, council. And Mr. Porta, again, we'll take this up for consideration at our meeting on November the 19th.
Nineteenth.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Gillum, you have the next item, please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Coming to you tonight with a proposal for a disc golf course out at Deerfield Park. Sam Barfield, who's here tonight.
He's back here.
Right. He's the disc golf designer. He's with Etowah Disc Golf. He approached us earlier this year with a proposal. Then with COVID hitting, it just got, kind of got put on the back burner. So he stayed in contact with us throughout the summer and into the fall, and thought it was a good time to bring it to Mr. Porta and then on to Mayor and council for approval. It is in the wooded area of Deerfield Park. According to Sam, the disc golfers like a natural obstacles to play around instead of the wide open. And he said that this will be a premier disc golf course for the region, not just the state. Part of the agreement with Sam is doing the course will also be to where he'll be doing anywhere from six or more tournaments throughout the year. Part of the agreement, we do have a program provider agreement to where he'll give 20% of his gross registration fees back to the city for the tournament. The rest of the time, it'll be wide open for residents and non-residents alike to come and, and to play disc golf. There's a map there of the course where it would be laid out. Sam has gotten all the sponsorships for the baskets and the holes and the signage. So the only thing really being out of the city will be the tee pads, which we have left over from existing batting cages for baseball. And the Parks and, the Parks Maintenance Staff will be the ones that'll install the tee pads and the signage around the, around the course. So based upon approval, Sam thinks that the course will be up and operational within a month. And Sam's here, if you guys have any specific questions about the course or about disc golf in particular. I know he did drop off a disc and a marker for you guys as well to see exactly what, what one is as opposed to a frisbee.
I do have a question for you.
Yes.
And if not, Sam can answer it. You said we get, the city would get 20% of the registration fee for the tournaments. What roughly is a registration? Is it $100? Is it $20?
It varies for tournament.
About one this weekend is $55. If I have 110 players and they're registering, it's $55.
Good enough. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd echo in Tom's sentiments. This is another item that we can bring to our citizens at minimal cost to the city. And it's just, we have this open field. This potential opportunity for us. I do recommend that's approval.
Thank you. And I'll go on record, if council approves it, we will have a, I'm gonna challenge every one of you to a frisbee golf tournament. Figure out what goes on there. Think about that.
I'll hang my hammock right in the middle.
Is there any other discussion about this item?
I, I think we just talked about, you know, understanding the water hazards back there and also there is a buffer between that Deerfield neighborhood. Is that what?
Yeah, there is a buffer zone. It's about 50 or 60 feet that's back there between the property line of the residence and the property line of the city park.
And will, will that course go into that at all?
No, not at all.
Depends how bad you are throwing.
You don't shake it too much.
Shouldn't be too many recommended.
No, shouldn't be. All right. Any other discussion? If there is not, a chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
You have the next item as well.
Yes, sir. These are for part of the geobond projects. We came to you a little over a month ago to seek your approval with the remaining geobond money that we had left. And one of the areas that you guys wanted us to target was the Matthew Hill improvements to the park over there. So we're coming to you now with signature tennis courts to be able to resurface the tennis and basketball courts out there. They'll be looking just like the tennis courts and the outdoor basketball court at Dillinger, the tennis courts at Hicks Park. They'll have the royal blue and light green color scheme with the lines. They'll put the nets up for us. So all that's there, and that's $14,400. There will be other improvements made to the outdoor basketball court. We'll have new poles and goals put up. Some of the pictures are up there as they scroll through, and you can see the basketball goals, the acrylic kind. That's not the metal kind. It's now all the rusts and everything else. We'll have picnic tables out there that'll go onto the pavilions down the right field and left field foul lines of the baseball field. We will remove the current ones, which are wood, and they're all warped. So these are heavy mesh picnic tables. They are ADA tables. So one side will have the six-foot bench and the other side the eight-foot. So all the amenities out at the park there will be $10,522. The outdoor basketball goals and poles are $7,700. And then the benches on the tennis courts, including the metal brackets to put them onto the court, is $2,200. Also with this package, we'll put a linear park at the Pettit Creek Trail near the Mission Roadside. There's an open green space area there, but we'll put two picnic tables and some benches with backs on them. So for cyclists, bikers, joggers, walkers, if they just want a rest place, or if people just want to come and have a open flat green space area on the trailhead right there, that they can sit and enjoy a picnic or rest or whatever. That's $5,629. And to have a couple of benches at the canoe kayak launch at Leek Mound, so people can either sit and fish there or just relax and watch the river is $1,722. The total amount of this package here is $42,173. Like I said, the resurfacing on the courts will be with signature tennis courts, which have done our courts in the past. And then all the other amenities, the basketball goals and poles, those will be purchased through BSN Sports. So we're coming to you for approval on these park improvements.
Okay. Thank you. I know we got a long agenda tonight. I do want to comment on the, on the Matthew Hill Park stuff just very quickly. I want to thank Councilman Cooley, who back in our visioning session brought to our attention the state of disrepair of that area. And I know we've already made some improvements out there, but I want to thank him for, Councilman, for bringing that to us. And I want to thank you for the hard work of putting together a plan that's gonna really kind of transform that area and back to where it was. Matthew Hill did an awful lot for our community. And I know the one thing that he said during the dedication of that park, he says, you know, you're gonna keep it up. And thanks to your efforts, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to put it back to honor the man that was. So, so thank you.
You're welcome. We're excited about it. And it was a department-wide process here to get here. And Parks Maintenance doing the cleanup over there. Now they're doing it on a weekly basis. So it's been a, it's been a fun job. We look forward to doing these projects here.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
One question, please. I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
For the future, so that we don't end up having Coach Hill's Park in this disarray again, do we have it now on our maintenance program? We have it set to be monitored a little more closely now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom could not hear you. The question was, is that on our maintenance schedule so that it doesn't fall into disrepair again?
Yes. It was about a month ago, we met with Mr. Cooley out at Matthew Hill Park with our Parks Maintenance Staff, and we did a full cleanup, including the stadium wall area, removing some stones and bricks and pushing them off to the side. But now the, Matthew Hill Park is on a routine, weekly maintenance schedule. So when they're over there on that side of town doing Benham Park and then going on to Hicks Park, they stop by over there at Matthew Hill Park. It takes about an hour. And so that's on a weekly rotating basis.
And just to be, prior to this, it really is the responsibility of the housing authority to maintain. So it's not anything that we chose not to take care of. It's just we're taking on the added responsibility for something just because it's the right thing to do.
With maintenance, with these, you know, these projects that we're upgrading, absolutely.
Thank you. All right. So we did have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 We have a motion by Councilman Cooley and I believe a second by Councilman Fox. If I'm not mistaken, y'all can correct me if I'm, and it passes unanimously. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Chief McCann, you've got the next couple, please, sir.
We need to replace 2005 Ford F-150 with 185,000 miles. We sent out bids. We got three bids back. Robert Laura was low bid at $33,400. It's going to be paid for with federal asset forfeiture funds. And all the documents have been submitted.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please.
In September of this year, we had an officer involved in that, in an accident at Highway 41 and Church Street. He was not injured. Neither was the other driver. But it totaled the vehicle. So we sent out bids to replace that vehicle with a 2021 Dodge Charger. The reason we're using the Dodge Charger is we want to take all the equipment out of the wrecked one and install it into the new Charger. And basically, we sent out bids again. Robert Laura was a low bidder, $25,978. And it'll be paid for with insurance funds from the wrecked vehicle, about $20,400. And then the rest of it will be paid for with federal asset forfeiture funds.
Thank you, chief. Any discussion? And if not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Reinhardt, next item, please, sir.
Admiral, Mayor and council, tonight I have a Southern Actuarial Services invoice. They provide actual evaluation on our, on the city's pension plan along with individual employee benefit statements. Invoice is $12,500. This is done annually. It is a budgeted item, and I recommend approval for Southern Actuarial Services invoice to be paid at $12,500.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief Carter. Come on down.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, Mayor and council. I bring before you this evening the annual firefighter physicals as required through NFPA 1582 and also OSHA standards for hazardous materials response. This is the same physicals that we've been taking for several years. We're electing to go back with the same company last year, SiteMed, who will do the onsite physicals, pricing exactly the same, no increase over last year, even with all the coronavirus extra precautions that will have to take place. Base price for the entire department is $23,975. There could be potentially some additional lab testings and lab draws that may have to occur once the initial information is examined by the physician. So I'm asking for an amount up to and not to exceed $26,500 for the annual physicals through SiteMed. This is a budgeted item, and we are below our budget within this amount.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hampton, you've got the next four tonight.
Taking over for Bob.
That's right.
The most items. Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm here first of all to, to ask for approval to purchase a mulching head for our mini excavators that we use. This enables us to clear easements and right-of-ways in a much shorter time, and it's got an additional benefit of, of making mulch that we can leave on the job sites and not have to pay to haul to a dump somewhere. The, the models we use are Yammar, which is a model that sold through Vermeer. So we contacted Vermeer and got pricing for the attachment and all the needed mounting brackets, hoses, and everything else. We need to use them on all of our excavators. And the total came out to 24, $25,490. I think on my summary, it was 25,000 flat, but I just caught that today. So $25,490 is a budgeted expense. I ask for your approval.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion on that item? If not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion to approve the item.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, Derek.
Yes, this is a, an invoice from Seagas Southeastern Natural Gas, their boring contractor. They had to do some boring in order for us to be able to get an underground service to a new building over at Cartersville Garden Apartments. The, the contract is already, the Cartersville Gardens contract has already paid us for this amount in advance. So basically, we've already been kind of reimbursed ahead of time. So we're just paying this. It's no cost to the city. The amount of the invoice was $6,840.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Continue on, please, Derek.
Yes, this, the next two items were for, both for the Highland 75 Industrial Park. The first one, the cable vault is a vault we need to help us with pulling in cable and be able, be able to have an access point for maintenance. It's going up at 75, uh, Highland 75 along Great Valley Parkway. The, the total cost for the vault was $7,732 and is a budgeted expense.
Okay. Any discussion here? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And the last one for you, please, Derek.
Yeah, the last one is after we pull the cable through the vault, we have to take it over to a switching cubicle to terminate it. So the last item is a switching cubicle to S and C switch, PMH 10 model, which is our standard. It's a sole source item. And the total cost from Gresco Supply for this model was $21,435, which is again a budgeted expense.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Derek on this item? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Well done.
Mr. Hampton, before you leave, I just wanted to say one thing, and I hope I'm not out of turn, but just, I just want to thank your electrical department over the past week, couple of weeks with the storm and, and the hard work you all have put in. And I know you're probably gonna leave after your fourth thing. So I just wanted to tell you that before you leave, that we do appreciate the electrical department's hard work and all that they accomplished in a short, a short amount of time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And if I may, Public Works, gas, fire, police, everybody chipped in, anything we needed. So it was a city effort, Dan, everybody chipped in. So I, I want to extend the appreciation to everybody at the city that helped us. It was, it was rough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if you're okay, Derek, I just, I do want to, I did want to bring up at the end, but Councilmember Roth brought up the first storm came through, Derek gave me the information, 4:06 a.m. last Thursday was the first power outage notification we got. Within that, we had 3,200 city customers lost power. All our customers were back on within 38 hours. And if you're, you're listening to other news outlets, Georgia Power and other agencies, they took a lot longer. Our guys worked around the clock as much as they can. They had one crew come in from Fort Valley that helped them. But as Derek alluded to, we, we coordinated the effort to, with our gas department, our fire department, public works, storm water, solid waste, to clean the streets. Tommy's guys have already had 52 loads cleared from the roads. They're about 75 to 8% cleaned up, which is a great accomplishment for our entire city. So I thank your department, as well as all the other departments, they pitched in tremendously. And it shows the strength of our city by what you guys have done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Councilman, thank you for bringing that up in front of him, because like I said, everybody wants to make their comments at the end, and nice to have them here to hear it. So thanks. Mr. Dixon.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The gas system is requesting to purchase some pipe. This is for the Old Alabama GDOT relocation. This is at a, it's 13,200 feet at a total cost of $39,072. And this would be coming from Consolidated Pipe, which is a sole source provider for this item. We recommend your approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next one, please, sir.
Yes, sir. We have, we need to replenish our stock of a couple of specialty fittings. These are eight-inch line stopper fittings. They come from Mueller Company. This is a sole source provider also. And they are at a cost of, it's two fittings, at a cost of $8,839.74. And we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? And if not, a motion is in order.
Make a motion. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And the final one for you, please.
We also have some more pipe. This is also for the, the GDOT Old Alabama road project. This would be some eight-inch steel pipe, and it also comes from Consolidated Pipe, which is also a sole source provider for this item. We're asking to purchase 1,220 feet at a cost of $19,703. And this is a budgeted item, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everybody. We've got one of our regulars tonight. As we talked about in the work session, we had a gearbox for our number two screw pump in the secondary that basically had a bearing failure. But it chose one of the most inopportune times to do this. Now, I definitely want to point this out to everybody. This happened at 2:00 in the morning on October the 2nd. October the 9th is when our Hurricane Delta came through and dumped all the rain on us. We contacted Motor and Gear Engineering, who is our typical vendor for this repair, and explained the situation to them. They promised us if we had the thing hanging in the air at 12 o'clock, they would pick it up on Monday. They brought it back to us on Friday morning, and it was operational by 5:00 Friday afternoon, just in time for the rain to get here. If you notice in your packet, and I'll have to flip because I don't have this committed to memory, we paid a little over $3,500 for that expedited turnaround time. Our other alternative would have been to have rented diesel-powered pumps to replace that loss of pump capacity, and it would literally have been tens of thousands of dollars. So we grabbed Motor and Gear. They promised us it would be done, and they absolutely delivered. They actually delivered it a little earlier than we anticipated. The total cost for the repair was $16,324.28, and I definitely recommend we approve that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, also in addition, as Bob's guys, you talked about getting it to them. His guy showed up early that morning on Monday to get there, to get, start on the process to dismantle it and get it to the shop.
They started about 5:00 in the morning, I think.
Outstanding. I'm glad it turned out.
Me, too.
All right. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Mr. Porta, you have the next set.
Yes, Mayor. The first item is the health and wellness, or health and vision insurance renewal. Currently, our health insurance is provided with One Digital as an agent, and we're with Anthem, Blue Glass and Brew Shield. They have come in with a zero rate increase for 2021. Also, One Digital brought us a proposal from Anthem for their vision insurance, which we currently provided through Visa. That's a voluntary product that we have for their employees. But they came in with better benefits at the same premiums that the employees are paying. With that, if we, if you select to go with Anthem on the vision, it'll actually reduce the health insurance by 1%. So that's my recommendation this evening to go with the health and vision insurance renewal with Anthem for 2021.
Okay. Any questions for Dan on this item? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is the life and disability insurance renewal. Currently, we're with Peachtree Planning with standard insurance. We had a three-year rate guarantee that expired this, end of this year. They initially came in with a thirty percent rate increase. We had them shop the market. We also looked at Anthem with the One Digital agents. With our aging workforce, which is good in a way, because you've got a lot of people that are dedicated to their job and love their job, but it also brings that life insurance costs are increased because of our age. But going back to the market and pushing the agents to come back with better proposals, we were able to get with Peachtree Planning, which is the recommendation to go with another three-year rate guarantee with Equitable as the company. It'd actually be a decrease in us. It'll save the city over three years about seventy-seven thousand dollars, so my recommendation to go with Peachtree Planning with Equitable as the insurance company.
Questions on this item? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is the wellness program for 2021. What's being recommended is the same thing we did in 2020 with Corporate Health Partners, which is working with, again, our agents of One Digital. This will be a one-time biometric screening and health coach follow-up for all our employees. It's a mandatory process. If they elect to not participate, they pay additional on their insurance premium. We basically have about ninety-nine percent participation. The cost of this is roughly twenty-three thousand and some change. It actually will be paid for by, Blue Cross Blue Shield provides us fifty thousand dollars in wellness coverage. So we get that cost reimbursed, and I recommend that for your approval with Corporate Health Partners.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? And if there is none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. I do want to say, these last three items, we, we tend to make efficient work of our work. We get items ahead of time and have a chance to review them. We talk about them in work session, but there's an awful lot of work that goes into the health and vision insurance renewal, the life and disability, and the wellness. So we pass them in a few minutes, but there's an awful lot of diligence and time that goes into preparing them. So thank you for that and everybody that plays a part in that.
Thank you.
What's that?
Thank you.
You can take a deep breath, then. Next item, please. Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mayor. Last week, we had our annual employee lunches. It was served by Fire Up Barbecue. It actually came at a good time, because during the storm, we were able to feed our crews out there on the streets a couple of days in a row, and I recommend approval of this invoice of six thousand, two hundred, four dollars and twelve cents, and our employees do appreciate that you go, you offer this to them every year.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Yes, Mayor, is a straight-line collision invoice. We had a vehicle that was damaged. The party is at fault. The cost to repair the vehicle is nine thousand, two hundred, forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents, and I recommend payment of this invoice, and we will be reimbursed by the other insurance company.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And before we get on to any other items, how'd we do tonight, Jace?
We lost. It wasn't even close. Top of coaching.
Before we get to the discussion item, there is an item that is tabled, and I will need a motion in a second to take that item off the table, as it was scheduled to be done this evening.
Motion to take it off the table.
Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is taken from the table and put on our plate, I guess, for lack of a better term. And Mr. Porter, you want to tell us the latest with AZ twenty dash zero four and Z twenty dash zero three?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Manino and I met earlier this week and looked over the code section. Under the current zoning requirements, you actually have an opportunity to table this again. Talking to Mr. Ledbetter, one of the people behind the zoning recommendation, they are actually asking for additional tabling of this item until December seventeenth at council meeting, to give the additional time to meet with the city, the county, and the school system to discuss their plans and try to work out a resolution on the TAD amendment they need to, that's part of that property out there. So the recommendation by the Ledbeters is to table this item, both these items, until December seventeenth, city council meeting.
Okay. Thank you. If that is what council wishes to do, it would require a motion, a second, and a vote in the affirmative of that motion. So, the motion could be forthcoming.
I'd like to make a motion to table AZ twenty dash oh four and AZ twenty dash oh three until our December seventeenth meeting.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarification, the second item is Z twenty dash zero three and not AZ. Are you fine with that? Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to that? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. So a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling that item until, those items until December seventeenth? Please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And so the item is put back on the table until December seventeenth. Council, I'm going to give you a little bit of discretion here. We rather efficiently went through twenty-seven items in about thirty-five minutes, so congratulations on that. Before we begin the discussion item, would you like to continue to plod forward, or would you like to take perhaps a five-minute intermission to refresh yourselves?
Let's just keep going. I'm moving forward.
I feel pretty good, Mayor. I'm ready to roll.
All right. Well, let's, let's press on then, and we will do that with the discussion item. Again, this is the second one of these discussions that we have had, and I'd like to conduct it the same way, similar way that we did last time. I'd like to open it up for discussion amongst council about, we've had really an extra week between meetings to gather information, to hear from people who are interested in this particular topic. And now it'll be a time for council to have discussion amongst yourselves and ourselves, too, about gathering and sharing that information. At the end of that, when you all have done that, we'll open it up for public comment. I am going to ask, this time that we limit comments to three minutes, and I'll ask Mr. Archer to be the, the timekeeper. We will not cut you off mid-sentence, but after three minutes, we'll give an indication. And if you could please just wrap up your comments from there. I appreciate everybody who's taken time to be here. We want everybody to be heard. The other thing I would ask, as I mentioned in the first meeting, is council needs new and different information. If you shared something the last time, we heard it, it's in our records, we got it. So if you've got something new that you'd like to bring to the discussion, certainly happy to have it, and if not, we've, we've already gathered what we've got. We want to continue to plow new ground, so. With that being said, I will turn it over to council for the discussion on the downtown entertainment district. Does anybody have anything to add or to discuss? Any information to share?
I don't want to reiterate everything I said the first time. I don't want to get in trouble. I don't, at this point, I don't have any new. Just pile ahead.
Okay. Everybody's fine where they are right now.
Wait a minute. Still get my thoughts together. Okay. But I'll just speak anyway, maybe the comments I talk. My thought is on this entertainment district. I've seen, read a lot of discussion about other municipalities in this area. Acworth, Willstok, Kennesaw, and the things they're doing, and then comparing it with Carltonville. And my summation is all of them have unique circumstances with entertainment districts, and they have some things we don't have as far as structure-wise, and we have some things they don't have for a structure-wise. I think here they've taken in consideration, and some things need to be clarified with me as far as entertainment district. There were some areas that's just regular places of business that's not involved in entertainment districts, and they should and do need consideration as to that location, garbage and trash and whatever. I think that should be thought out, and when these type of discussions are made, to include them, it won't be lost when topics come up. Also, in these districts, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, but I think I read somewhere, you could have a sixteen-ounce cup. And to me, a sixteen-ounce cup is rather large to carry two and four, maybe eight ounces. These are just my thoughts at random. If you're going to visit, in order for ten to five or ten sources. Also, what's the penalty for a person, an individual that violates the entertainment district violation or what other violation? Or disorder of conduct or whatever? And just riding around downtown, just looking at areas, our town, the streets are not well-lit either. They have a lot of dark spots. And although we think all the dustmen are great responsibly, they do things responsibly, there are, you know, opportunities to have dark places, which are not good. But the main thing I was concerned about was, in these economic times, I think there's got to be a give and take. If I was a businessman, I would want my business to thrive, especially when I've been on lockdown for a long time, and that's my livelihood. So that's, that's got to be considered. You don't want to ghost town. But by the same token, I guess you just want a code of moral conduct where everybody can, can maybe have the entertainment, but just don't go overboard with it, where you just give the city and town a bad name, put it that way. But I, but I do think that both sides should give and take. It shouldn't be no either or. I don't think that's good for either side. So I'll let that start the discussion.
Thank you. I will say, just to be clear, the, we are not voting on a entertainment district tonight. What I hope will be at the end of this discussion, if council's ready to, is just to make a consensus, and I don't know if it requires a vote, but if, if council wants to make the decision tonight, or if they need time to consider it as to whether or not they want to move forward with an entertainment zone, just an entertainment zone. And then, from that point, I think a lot of the points that you bring up regarding penalties, how we address potential litter, where that item, where that area might be, where those times where that would be allowed, those things, I think that's what you're saying with the give and take, is there's an opportunity to accomplish what may want to be accomplished, but also be respectful of the people that have concerns and try to balance it out. Is that?
Precisely.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I would, I would say, you know, it's interesting, some of the stuff I've read that, that the open container issue in the downtown gives a kind of a vision, kind of a perception of vitality. And interesting enough, this past week, I've heard that comment used about our downtown already, and people in the public talking about our downtown and how the vitality of it, or the vibrance of it, the, the fact that it's alive. And so, you know, this is not like something that we need to add into our downtown for vitality, for, to be a vibrant downtown. We already have that. You can, you can see that on several other occasions, not just tonight, which is an open house downtown, which is a great thing for our downtown community. And you can see, you know, coming down here, the parking. So I, I think, you know, that, don't be, don't be, I don't think we already have that downtown, and that we don't need to add that for, have that perception of a live downtown. I know some communities, Calvin, to your point, have added that because to draw people to their establishments or have that as, you know, the flickering light, hey, we have this in our downtown. But I don't think that is necessarily, when you look at the community that we have, the character of our community, you know, what does that add to the value of our community? How does that add to it when you look around to the establishments now? And, and to your point, though, I do think, you know, businesses are, they're, they're in business to sell a product, right? And that's what they're, that's what they're doing. And so I do, I do appreciate that comment about our businesses and their effort to, as a, as a businessman to sell their, or a businesswoman to sell their product. So, and then think that is a valid point of consideration.
Okay. Anyone else? You know, my role in this, I think I've communicated pretty clearly with them, my role, I feel in this is not to advocate for anybody, but rather to just say, we're going to do this publicly, and we want as much information, everybody wants a voice, gets heard. I will tell you that at the last meeting, I had a discuss, my questions were, what are we trying to accomplish? What is the benefit? And who wants it? And I'll tell you, over the last three weeks, I've spent time talking with shop owners, and so I tell you this not as a, as a selling point, but just repeating some of the answers that I've gotten from some of the business owners. Obviously, if this were to be put in, in some form or fashion, it would allow for more outdoor dining options that weren't fenced in areas, which would allow a larger dining capacity. One of the other interesting comments that I got was from a, was from a restaurateur that said that it would keep him from having to, to keep an employee at the door to make sure that they weren't violating a rule that, you know, people like to try to wander outside, and so he wouldn't have to manage adults. I also heard from a couple of different retail places who said that they would consider being open if something like this were to happen. So, again, I, my role in this is not to advocate, but I'm just simply trying to get information into the hands of council, and those are some of the comments. I did reach out to the City of Acworth and asked them about what comments or what concerns they had when they instituted, and they said that, that there was really no impact on behavior, there's no increased police activity. The one thing they did say was that occasionally, that there is a little bit more trash from the cup, that people will set their cup down or something like that, and I have an idea for that if council were to decide to, to move forward with this. So. Kennesaw told me very similar, similar comments, so. And both of those communities, I don't, I know Acworth doesn't even limit the times when they have them. I think that's limiting something to certain days or times. If council were to do that, that would something that I think would need to be considered. But again, I, I say this not to sway anybody to anything, but just to share with you the information that I've gathered from shop owners and businesses downtown.
And when you say, a point of clarification?
Sure.
That businesses would open, are you talking about that businesses would come here?
No, I'm sorry. Well, actually, there's a couple of instances. There were a couple of existing retail establishments that said they would extend their hours
Oh, extend their hours.
Thinking that that would be, drive foot traffic enough to where they might be interested to stay open a little bit later. I actually also spoke with a gentleman who has restaurants in two other communities that is looking at coming to Cartersville, and just met him at, at an event, and just kind of said, well, this is something we're talking about. What do, what are your thoughts? Does this make you more or less likely? And he said, you know, we, we have kind of a neighborhood type of, he wants his, he wants his clientele to be. And he said, you know, we, we have kind of a neighborhood type of, he wants his, he wants his clientele to be, you know, within a very short, you know, radius of space. And so he said something like that would definitely be of benefit to him from the standpoint of if you have a thirty or forty-five or an hour long wait, that if somebody can have a drink and be just standing outside of a fenced area or sitting along the plant or whatever, while they wait, it would, it would be more likely that he would retain that business. And I heard this from a few different restaurants, that, you know, instead of going up to, to one of the chain restaurants at Main Street, that it would help them retain, that those people would hang around to have the meal as opposed to that meal going, that meal letting go into somebody else.
Are the, are the waits in the restaurants, then, the shops or the restaurants you've talked to, are they, are there a length of waits because of lower capacity restrictions? Or have they experienced hour and forty-five minute waits capacity because of that when they're at full capacity?
Oh, when they're at full capacity. I mean, on Friday and Saturday nights, I mean, if you come down here, just about every restaurant does have a, it, it, it's a problem that's generated by success.
Is it pre-COVID or, I mean, because some of them are restricted in their capacity, is what I'm asking now. Is that pre-COVID or post?
I mean, the, the answer, I mean,
Both ways.
I mean, I asked, you know, recently, so I mean, this is all post-COVID, but it's just as, it's just as well as I can answer that for you.
That was one of, one of my reasoning about restaurant capacity with the COVID laws being in effect, when you can have a limited capacity inside your place of business.
Well, you could also say that with that limited capacity, you would have people that are waiting a little bit more often. And if they're waiting to eat, do you want them waiting packed inside, or would you like them to be outside, spread out a little?
That's why I said, give a ten, I couldn't.
And again, this is the information from, from the restaurants. I'm not.
That's right.
Okay. Any other information or discussion amongst council?
And Matt, just, you know, the last meeting, I went through, you know, sort of what the map would look like, what the ordinance would sort of look like, or, you know, that we had gotten. But remember, this started almost a year and a half, two years ago. And obviously, COVID wasn't an issue at that point. But it, it came to us from our downtown. It wasn't something that council just thought up and thought, hey, this is a great idea. This came from other people bringing it to the DDA, bringing it to us. So I understand that, that it is a nice safety feature now. But I think, regardless, I think that's what the retail and restaurants were, were looking at. Prior to COVID, I think COVID has just made it even more likely. So that was, just wanted to make sure that that was said, that this was brought up in meetings a couple of years ago prior to COVID, not just since COVID.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, council, we will open up the floor for public comment and ask anybody wishing to step forward to do so at this time. And when you do, please, again, for our clerk, if you would please give your name and your address, so we can include that in the minutes.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you again for allowing me to come out. Grady Clark, pastor of Calvary Chapel River Oaks, 232 Nelson Street, here in Cartersville. And I just have a couple of points to add to what we talked about the last time. And it really ties off of what Mr. Cooley said, and also, mayor, what you were commenting on about the surrounding cities. Both Acworth and Kennesaw do have an open container policy. I served in the Acworth community for about six years on their Acworth Business Association Board, passed president in two thousand and seven. So I saw this coming. I voted against it when it came, but it passed. But the thing is, is that there's a whole different layout in city and, of the city of Acworth and the city of Kennesaw than there is in Cartersville. All of their festivals are located pretty much on the west side of the railroad tracks. Main Street is where they hold the Acworth Taste of Acworth, they hold the Arts Fest, they hold the 5K race right there, they hold the car show there. They shut down Main Street on the north and south end of town. They lock it down. They have police presence on both ends, and the police are present inside. And so, to date, and I'm not saying this may not change, but to date, it's all contained for the most part. We can't contain this zone. This zone we have on both sides of the railroad tracks. There's also, this map I know is going to be probably adapted to include the brewery that's on the other side of Tennessee Street, at Cherokee. And so if that's zoned in, you've got Main Street and you've got Tennessee Street that's going to have a lot of foot traffic, more foot traffic than normal, that you cannot contain. And I think it's a safety issue. I think more, that's one area we really need to look at. We cannot do it the way other cities do it close to us because of the layout of our town. And I think that's something we need to look at. The, the crosswalks, it's so hard to see anybody in the crosswalks right now. People are coming through there. We've seen the little cones in the, in the center, you know, stop for pedestrians and all of that. But I'm telling you, if, if you have that zone zoned off and you've got people parking in other areas, a lot more pedestrian traffic, it's going to be that much more opportunity, especially with alcohol involved, where people not be paying as much of attention. And again, a safety issue is something that I would think that we need to look at. Now, I wanted to mention this to you as well. This morning, I was listening to Alan on the radio here at WBHF. I love his show, by the way, he does a good job. But, what's that? Oh, okay. But he was talking with the Advocates for Children and with the Harbin Clinic, two, two people from those. And he brought off the point himself this, this morning. He said, since COVID-19 has been in the forefront of everybody's mind, that there's a lot of stress involved in that. And drug abuse has, has gone up in the Bartow County. He also said that the, that family violence is also on the increase. So if that's true, then how can we say that alcohol is not going to be added to that mix? And it's going to be another issue we have to look at. So I'm right at three minutes, okay. Well, I just wanted to thank you all for the time this evening. Again, as safety issues, what I primarily wanted to talk about. And just lastly, I enjoyed the 5K race on Saturday. I was disappointed to see that after the race, one of the sponsors had beer on their table at nine-thirty in the morning. I did not think that was a very good thing. I think that was a bad idea. I know that their, their committee did it, but I believe it had to be approved by our DDA, and I don't think that's a good thing for Cartersville, especially nine-thirty in the morning.
Thank you, best court. Anyone else?
How are y'all? I'm Wesley, so new at this, but just want to share my heart, man.
Sure, I need to, need your name.
Wesley Morris, 131B, Elwood Drive. Just bought a house on 171 Elwood Drive, I've been modeling it, following in, but we're making progress. But my heart says, man, I grew up in Cartersville. Man, we went to school together. And my background is, man, I was in construction, but come out of construction, got in the ministry. And so I was a jail chaplain at Bartow County Jail for five years. Done quite a bit of extensive transitional housing, trying to find guys' jobs, all that kind of stuff. Did that for quite a long time in the city. That being said, man, I'm a real practical guy. All right, I really believe sometimes when we look at this thing, I look at it as a whole. And if self-control wasn't a problem, Xena Drive would be empty. Are you with me? So we're putting things out for people to, I believe in accountability, and I believe restaurants are accountable for the alcohol they serve. Because that their waitresses and everybody, they're accountable. But the minute people step out of that building, all of a sudden accountability is lost. And there's nobody really to be accountable, that or another, for what's going outside the premises. And I've seen the effect of lack of self-control in my own life. And I, I don't have a problem, I'm not going to drink, I don't have a problem if other people do. But I do have a problem with the word self-control. A lot of people, man, drink too many. And then all of a sudden, that creates a problem across the space. With driving, I, I just left La Crosse, Wisconsin a couple of months ago, did some rival stuff up there, I was there in June. And I was in the church when the grandmother stood up and said, hey, pray for my family, my son got shot last night. Standing outside the Twisted Moose in La Crosse, Wisconsin. He wasn't a bouncer, he's just the guy sitting at the assistance that sits people. Because sometimes when intoxication happens, people do things they shouldn't be doing. So my concern, as just a citizen of Bartow County, is I'm not here to browbeat people for drinking or not drinking. My concern is when people, if everybody was self-controlled, pretty much like I'd say in this room, I don't think we'd have such a problem. But that's not the case. And so you are going to have people come in and do things that are reckless when they don't have self-control. And the word I keep, parents' liability. The liability is going to fall on somebody. And you with me? And at the end of the day, man, there's just, that's my heart, man. I, I, I want to, I love the city. I moved back home because I love Cartersville, it's an amazing place to live. I think you guys are doing an amazing time in the city, doing things. But my concern is if people do want to drink, I, I think it should be inside. I think open container. And I also see all these kids, I've got four kids, they're in the school system. And there's a constant barrage of kids around the city downtown that are, even, I've seen young kids, middle school. There's just a pile of kids walking around down here. And like I said, there's no accountability. So thanks for your time, God bless y'all.
Thank you.
My name's Chuck Smith. I pastor Glade Ridge Baptist Church, the most southern church in Bartow County. But I have members who live here in Cartersville, and I live in Cartersville. My concern is that I have children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren who participate in the affairs downtown and are here routinely. And I deal with drunks and alcoholics and drug addicts routinely as a minister. And I'm telling you right now that I don't want my family exposed to open containers. I oppose open containers. I submit to you, one beer or one drink of alcohol or one glass of wine affects your mind. And when your mind's affected, you don't do things sensibly sometimes. So I just want to let it be known that I oppose. If I live eleven more days, I'll be eighty-one years old. And I thank God for this city and this county. But I'm telling you, if we, if we allow this to go on, I think it'll be a mistake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Can I get your address, Mr. Smith? Can I get your address, please?
216 McCasy Creek Road. Sixty-five seventy McCasry, sixty-five seventy Glade Road.
My name is Beth May. I'm at 224 Walker Hill Circle in Cartersville. I have a couple of different things I want to address, and I'll try and address them as quickly as possible. The word gateway came to me as I started thinking about what we needed to address. There is a gateway that begins to open doors to different things in different places. Our, our country is under great oppression, there's a lot of tyranny in different places. The more we open our cities to things such as open container, where can, people can browse and do what they wish, we're going to invite more of the Antifa type of activity, civil unrest. We had pastors that came and, and prayed and, and sat on the courthouse steps for our community when there was some civil unrest, and it was a peaceful protest. But what do we invite into our city when we invite these things? Is it going to be a gateway to more open bars without restaurants? Is it going to be a gateway to strip clubs? Is it going to be a gateway to more human trafficking? Is it going to be a gateway to more prostitution? Is it going to be a gateway to more effects on our children for drug abuse and alcohol abuse? And so I think that those things are needed to be considered. And this community has been focused on restoring the community and the beauty, beauty of it. And what is the purpose? You mentioned, mayor, the purpose. And I wasn't at the last meeting, so I didn't hear your comments. But I think that Cartersville wants to be a prestigious city. A city that invites people with honor and people of upper class to come and to attend our restaurants and attend our district downtown. But will the open container bring that, or will it bring something else?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pastor Mike Evernathy, Creekside Fellowship, 585 Old Alabama Road. Got three kids, attended Cardinal School. Seven grandkids attended Cardinal School. This is home, Lord, I'm sixty-seven years old, been here since I was big enough to kick rocks. And Bartow County is probably one of the most wholesome places to live. I have ten houses scattered out across this county. Every renter loves this county, everybody loves this county. I've enjoyed playing football against Cardinal when I was young, and now with Cardinal, man. But I, I appreciate you guys being on here. I was on city council for Kingston. I was on our DFAX board. Being on the DFAX board for six years, I saw what damage alcohol has done. I'm absolutely opposed to any alcohol. And ninety-two, I was in a car wreck, I had a drunk hit me head on, running sixty-five miles an hour. He knocked the motor out of the front of the car. I was paralyzed, my neck down. That can happen down here. And when it does, Matt, you may be liable for that wreck if they bring it back to you as being on this board. Because somebody's going to be liable for that. I was out of work eighteen months, wound up to have, to have three back surgeries, two hips replaced. Because somebody was in wrong, socially drinking, got soused, to the point it didn't hurt him, but it ruined my life. And what are we, what are we going to do when we've got these folks down here and they go hurt somebody? And their life is changed forever. I hope the morals of our county stands true. Jeremiah twenty-one and eight, and I did not come to preach to you, but he says, he said, tell them to choose. There's a pathway to life and wholesomeness, and there's a pathway that doesn't lead that way. And I'm telling you what, when we have Christmas parade, are we going to have drunks all over the town, running around? Man, we come around the corner on a transfer truck, bed, which I've been doing for twenty years, it seems like, as long as the parade's been going on. What are we going to do? Are we going to take this wonderful, splendid town that we have and bring it into the sewer? They can drink all they want to, let them stay in the building, let them get a ride home. But do not let these folks run up and down our streets as drunks. I'll tell you something, I hope to God we don't look like Acworth. I hope we don't look like Marietta. I hope we don't look like some of these cities. And I hope we keep our citizens safe. Because the citizens sometimes are like little children. They don't know what they really need. And they want to have everything. Well, I think you're the adults running it, and you're the smart ones. You need to say no. Some things, some plans just don't need to work out. And this is one of them. Guys, thank y'all. I've got three hundred and fifty kids and adults in my church, and they're all Cartersville, head to toe. My daughter's at there. Thank you, Mr. Archer. Appreciate your time, God bless y'all. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council David Franklin, 2031 Highway 113 in Taylorsville. But they don't tell me I'm from Taylorsville, they say Stilesboro. I live near the Taylorsville Walmart, which is the Dollar General. Lived here thirteen years, lived in three different states and over ten different cities. And of all the places I've lived in our family, this is the best place we've lived. The atmosphere, the family atmosphere, the involvement. Mayor, you know, I've seen, we've talked about how much this community works together to build a better Bartow. And my kids didn't grow up here, we moved here. So three of my kids were in college. And I've got four daughters and a daughter-in-law. And they love coming to downtown. Mr. Roth, the vitality of Cartersville, they talk about it, and they come from three different states. They talk about that vitality. One of my concerns is, I know my girls, they're not coming downtown if you've got open containers and drunks around, because they don't feel safe. Safety's just a big deal. And a bunch of us went through college and were around an awful lot of stuff. I've seen it later in life, but they just won't do it. I wouldn't bring my wife downtown if I knew there was going to be a lot of stuff going on. I just wouldn't. Table twenty-one, she likes that, Appalachian Grill, but there's a hesitancy to do that kind of stuff. I think that we have one of the most vibrant downtowns that we've got. That safety thing is a big thing. One thing, guys, I just, I thought and covered a lot of stuff here tonight. But right now, Main Street is the busiest place in Bartow County. One day, they're going to get Old Alabama finished, and I would think at least to table this discussion, do you get the trailer trucks going from downtown? People from out of town drive through Main Street. And as somebody that works here in town, there's a lot of safety issues with people walking across. Cooley, you mentioned it, the lighting and stuff like that, and I'm telling And I'm telling you, you put the addedness of alcohol and stuff. I think that safety thing is a big thing. Mr. Mayor, one thing that I've been listening, I think that one of the biggest concerns I have is the fact that I hear a lot of talk on the street that says this issue's already decided. And right now, we live in a country to where people don't feel like they're being listened to. And that's a dangerous place to be. And that's a concern for me, is the fact that there's this perception. And I appreciate what you said.
I can't control perceptions. And I can't control what you hear.
But I've been concerned about hearing that. I appreciate what you said about being open and thinking about it. And I appreciate you all listening. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Alan Sanders, 41, Whistlestop Drive. I know we're going to do new territory. You want to go over old ground. So for those who are in attendance, once again, I'm going to try to bring hopefully a sense of rationality and what really has going on. We just had our pub crawl. Thank you for having that approved for us. Because as a DDA board member, we had another successful pub crawl. It happened all weekend long, no problems, no issues, no concerns, no complaints. In fact, Table 21 told us, thanks to the pub crawl, we were able to stay open because we didn't have a whole lot of foot traffic. But people came in, decided to eat dinner. The comments that you were saying, Mr. Cooley, are exactly why we want to have this. We, as DDA board members, had a chance to talk to a lot of the businesses downtown. We want to create that foot traffic. We want to keep people down here if they're going to eat at a restaurant. We come down here all the time. My wife and I love to come down here. We raised our kids here as well. We don't believe in a post-apocalyptic Mad Max world that's being described that's going to happen here. It's not the case. We just had it this weekend. If you weren't down here this weekend, you wouldn't know anything about it. And if you were, and you didn't know about the pub crawl, you probably didn't know about it anyway. There aren't people hooting and hollering. It's not a college frat town. I'm tired of hearing that. I love this town. I love everything about it. Anybody who knows me knows how much I care about this town and how much I care about driving business downtown. More opportunities, more entertainment, more music, more chance to bring people together. When I was quoted on the radio this morning, that was absolutely true about COVID. People being locked up in their homes are turning to other alternative ways of dealing with the stress and anxiety. What I said is, by having opportunities to get out, to be out, to be able to engage with people again, is how you avoid those kinds of problems. We are social creatures. We love to be together, not isolated until we can't interact. Yes, COVID does give us an opportunity to have the ability to walk around now, if you have this ordinance, to keep us safe. But it isn't just about COVID. It's about having the opportunity to get around, move around, open businesses, maybe even get extended hours. It's economics. It's trusting adults to be adults. And to remind you, this ordinance would not change existing laws. It wouldn't change existing zoning. The idea that all of a sudden we're going to have a slum coming to Cartersville just is sophistry. It doesn't make sense. It's not about changing laws and ordinances. It's about giving an opportunity for people to be able to be responsible downtown and to keep it downtown and drive economics, business, and foot traffic to those entities that we love seeing in downtown. Thank you.
Ronald May, 224 Walker Hill Circle, Cartersville, Georgia. The last time I stood up here, I stood up on the side of morality. I just got off work today. I'm a RN at Cartersville Medical Center. And I keep hearing people are responsible by this other side. I work in a hospital system where the majority of our problem exists because people are unresponsible. They're not responsible for their diabetes. They're not responsible for their heart health. They're not responsible for whatever, including drinking. So as a medical person in the hospital, I think it would only take one person seeing one of these on this other side to see a person going through DTs who have an alcohol problem. To see one person who got hit by a car because of a drunk driver, with the drunk driver living, and people with their loved ones dead. I think it'd only take one time before some of these ideas would change about the responsibility of humans. The responsibility of human nature is for you to keep us safe. All right? So that's on the side of the responsibilities of the people. I just don't understand. You go to any college town, and we got responsible adults in college. And you take the statistics there, and the drunkenness is off the chain. I had teachers who picked up legs off of railroad tracks because a drunk went out and passed out on the railroad tracks. And this teacher handed the legs of this man to the EMS. Are we going to just say that's not going to happen? Or can we do something about it at this point? And that's where all this argument is, is I, you, Mayor, you might have talked to these restaurant owners. I don't know if you talked to anybody else. I brought up, I was coming to this meeting today, and one of the children of an owner of a furniture store here in town said, "I can't believe they're even thinking about this because we already clean up our defecation," that's what she called it, "on our property." So yes, the restaurant owners, I can see how they want it because of the economy. But what about the other businesses that came up and spoke last time on their properties and the fear of their property? So that's just where I'm going to stand here. You already heard the morality side. But now you've got to look at a nurse. And when I'm in that ER picking up somebody on these railroad tracks weeping, I'm going to be thinking of what we could have done.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is James Black. I pastor New Covenant Church at 5425 Highway 20 here in Cartersville. I live in Taylorsville, Georgia, but I have a lot of people who have families. And the ordinance, though it's intended to increase business, the reality is they can still sell alcohol anyway. I don't see how it's going to increase business. You're already selling alcohol. And that's fine. If you want to drink in your business, that's okay. But my concern is the safety issue when you begin taking it outside. And we have a lot of families who don't want to bring their children downtown and to bring them into that environment. So we want to look at it as a social issue, but as well as a safety issue. And when people begin to drink, they begin to do things that perhaps they wouldn't do normally. Bartow County just witnessed, I think, just this past week, not this week, but the week before, a shooting that happened in Uharly between some very respectable business people. And according to the newspaper, alcohol was involved in that situation. Who normally, these are good folks, but they were not able to make good judgments because of the influence of alcohol. So I just want to bring to your attention that we want to keep Cartersville a place where families are welcome and where people can come and bring, you know, you have your concerts in the summer, and you have other things that downtown, people enjoy coming to that. But if you're going to have alcohol involved in those kind of things, I think you're going to find out that a lot of people are not going to be coming. And then also, you'll have people who will have bad choices that they make that will result in bad situations that none of us would really like to have. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Lawrence. I have a building on 53 Stonewall Street. I appreciate you all. I just have a few questions, Mr. Mayor. I'm real impressed with the theater. And I know sometimes you're all absolutely packed out. I'm impressed with what you do. I'm curious, do you sell alcohol there?
No.
So that's not the draw? I mean, you're packed sometimes. I mean, you can't even get a parking spot. Y'all do a well job, and you don't sell any alcohol. Ross's Diner, how long have they been in business? Long time, right? They don't even stay open all day. You can still get a reasonable meal there. How much alcohol do they sell there? At Thorway's Stop. You know, it's amazing to me, Young's Drug Store. Been around for a long time. They're surrounded by all these box stores that can do it for half the price, even Walmart's even cheaper than that. But they do a tremendous business. They're still there. How much alcohol do they sell? I'm wondering. Sam Franklin, man, you know, for him to be able to stay in business as long as he has, when you can order a mattress online for half the price, and he still has a lot of foot traffic. How much alcohol does he sell? But you know what? I'll be honest with you. I have a lot of visitors come from outside of town. I don't go to the restaurants downtown because they serve alcohol, unless I'm invited and not to be rude. But I won't take my family to them. I won't take my friends. And my friends from out of town come, I go to the Cracker Barrel. Amazing thing, there's always a long waiting line at Cracker Barrel. How much alcohol do they sell? You know, if I'm a restaurant owner and my business ain't doing that good, it don't do a lot of time good to advertise and everything else. Sometimes you just fix the product. That's all I have to say. I just appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I hope I, my name is Barbara Hoffman. My address is 43 Milton's Walk Southeast, Cartersville. Mayor, I hope if you're going to cut me off at three minutes, I can send you an email. I can't do this in
You have my email address. I can't stop you.
Less than three minutes. I'm kind of here on two different hats. I spent most of the day today reading over the DDA's mission and vision statement. And what was it called? The Downtown Public Joint Commission that was passed in February 2018. It was like 300 pages long. And glanced through it. And I was amazed by the number of words that came up. And it was historic, small town, charming. We're not Woodstock or Acworth or Savannah or Charleston. We have our, nobody else has the museums that we have. I don't get why we need to have open container to attract people when we have tellus and we have Booth Western Art and the Bartow History Museum and Rose Lawn. And our amazing African-American heritage, Native American heritage. There is no place like Cartersville, Bartow County around us. And its attraction seems to be family-friendly. I actually read your festival ordinance. I thought that was just an absolutely brilliant ordinance that you guys put through that made it safe to have all these wonderful festivals downtown with still some guidelines and boundaries with the open container in a festival. I'm not sure we need open container to just, while we're waiting to eat. I just don't know how it's going to enhance who we are as a city and a county. We're, we were one of the top 50 most charming small towns in America last year. That's like a huge deal, I would think, out of the whole state of Georgia. That's us. Second hat is, I went to a funeral today at 4 o'clock for a 28-year-old man, young man, who overdosed on fentanyl and died. We have a problem here in Bartow County with the drugs and alcohol. It's why Recovery Bartow exists. It's why we just opened a recovery community center inside Tabernacle Baptist Church. I don't see how alcohol is going to help us. There's more to the pandemic than just the economic side of this. Alcohol sales are up 24%. You know, depression, anxiety, alcohol and drug use, all are increasing. And I just don't want us to make a decision for the long term based on hopefully a short-term issue. Thank you. Get my email.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am speaking on behalf of the Board of the Downtown Development Authority, or DDA. For those who do not know, the DDA administers the Main Street program on behalf of the city. We are directed by a board of seven local citizens per state law. Cartersville's been a certified Main Street community for 33 years under the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. I say this to emphasize that downtown Cartersville is part of a professional network of communities that are actively working to help their historic downtowns stay socially and economically relevant. As part of my research for this discussion, I spoke to the director of the Georgia Main Street Program about whether there is any data that quantifies the economic benefit of open container districts. As it turns out, there is not for a few reasons. Chief among them, that every downtown is different. However, she did tell me that open container ordinances are the most requested ordinance change pertaining to downtown districts across the state. She is not aware of any cities that repealed an open container district once in place, but she knows of multiple communities, including Acworth just recently, that have expanded their district after getting it established. I also talked to the Assistant Special Agent in Charge of Alcohol and Tobacco Enforcement at the Department of Revenue to clarify how the state regulates open container districts. Agent Carroll informed me that the open container ordinances are regulated at the local level, which would allow council the ability to fine-tune a local ordinance specifically for Cartersville if it is your will to move forward with exploring such a policy. Questions about open containers crossing state highways have come up, so I confirmed with Grant Waldrop, District Engineer for GDOT, that as long as rules of the road for pedestrians are being followed, GDOT does not have any issues with open container ordinances. Of the businesses that responded to my request for their opinion about the open container district, over 45 businesses, including the majority of our retail and restaurant locations in downtown, indicated a favorable opinion. I had two businesses and two residents in the district express negative opinions. Since community input is also important, the DDA opened a community forum for a week on this topic via our Facebook page. In that week, our post reached over 26,200 people, roughly 3,700 people per day, which you can compare to our average daily reach of about 500 people per day. In that week, over 513 individual comments, that's unique comments, not replies or replications, were shared on that post. And of those, only 12 were against the idea of an open container district. And that represents about 2.3% of the respondents who were against the idea of the district. There are at least 14 local cities that have included open container districts as a tool in their downtown development toolbox. It's not the means to the end. It is just a function of the options we are trying to give downtown development. The DDA feels that given the opportunity for local control, the anecdotal evidence of economic benefit from other communities, and the majority of support shown for this topic by downtown businesses, as well as the individuals who make a point of following downtown Cartersville and supporting us, that this is a policy that would be beneficial for the city to consider. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. I will close the public portion of this discussion item and turn it back over to council. If there's any further discussion or consideration for anything this evening, or if you're finding us gathering information this evening. I will for you.
Well, Matt, so the intent is us as council will then give you and staff guidance as to if we want to move forward. If we do move forward, obviously, city attorney will draft some forms of an ordinance that we all, it still goes to the Alcohol Control Board and then eventually back to us, right?
Well, you know, when this began, the, again, we go back to kind of pulling out the pub crawl ordinance and separating the two issues. You know, my only ground rule was that whatever we did would be done publicly and with the opportunity for public comment. And to this point, we've done that. And again, I don't know that it requires a motion or a second. I don't know that it's something we're bound to do this evening if council. I mean, again, we've heard from a lot of different people and places and things. But I do think the process would need to continue, again, in that open forum. So again, I don't know if it's a head nod. I don't know if council wants to decide one way or the other this evening. Again, I don't know if it requires a motion or a second or not to just decide you want to draft something. Yeah, turn to legal for that.
Yeah, we typically don't draft ordinances that we're not requested by the Council.
Right.
Or the mayor, or, I mean, the city manager can call and ask us to draft an ordinance, and we'll do it. Typically not for an individual council member, but upon action of the Council. But I can tell you that it's rare for, there to be a motion, a second, and a vote for us to get a draft, to draft an ordinance.
And again, unless it's required, I don't think that's something we need to do. But what I don't think would be honest to the process at this point is to say, alright, we don't wanna do anything, we'll go home, and then next week, you know, we pass around emails or make, or have kind of a group kinda request to go ahead and draft an ordinance. Does that make sense?
Well, I get that, I mean, I, you know, I'll eventually get there, but
Okay.
I'm just basically, what I'm saying is, the process for everybody that's sitting here and everybody that's listening, and so that I understand it,
Okay.
is we're still gonna go back through the channels that we traditionally do, where it goes to the Alcohol Control Board.
Yeah.
As an ordinance, they'll make comment, they'll take public comment on the actual, 'cause right now, we don't have one.
Right.
And I don't think right now, any of us are equipped to say what the ordinance would exactly be, but that we would entertain, I mean, I know that we were given a few different ones, we have Acworth, we have the one that I think Keith or David put together, we didn't have a map, we didn't have the I-orders and all that, which I think needs to be massaged over a time period, listening, you know, from the Alcohol Control Board and then back to us for two readings. We would be able to give that give and take, you know, where we can get that. I don't know that we're ready to do all the giving and taking right here, right now, but if you need that, I mean, we can sit here and hash that out, but I was under the impression that all you wanted to hear from us was, do we wanna move forward with this or not?
That is, that is one-hundred percent accurate.
Well, if you need it.
As a group, go ahead, Karen.
I mean, on that, on that side, to that, to that comment, to that, I mean, to that side of it, then, I mean, from the emails that I've, from the emails that I've received and the, and the comments that I have heard, I really don't see that, I mean, we didn't move on it in twenty-eighteen, and I still don't believe that this is a thing, is, open containers downtown is something that we need to move on. I think we, we have a festival ordinance, and we have been lackluster in even enforcing that. So, now you wanna move the ball down the field, down the field to an open container to downtown, and then make a map, which is going to go, you know, further than we want it to go, and, you know, then, once you get the map, then it's going to want to expand. We already brought in people into the downtown area who aren't even in, who aren't even paying the DDA, who aren't even paying the downtown district tax, and we've already brought them in. You know, and I just don't think that this is, this is the direction that I think that our city should go into open containers downtown. I am, I say we don't move forward with it, we didn't in twenty-eighteen for a lot of different reasons, and I don't, I don't believe that this is the direction that we should take our downtown. I think that, I think, and, I mean, we're gonna have a visioning session in January, make him up there, but, I, I mean, look, I pulled up behind establishments, going to, going into a coffee shop the other day, the other morning, and there's two cans of beer unopened sitting in downtown, okay, back where I was parking. I mean, we have an issue, and I think that this exacerbates that issue. I mean, there's, and I think we need to look at that, I think there's, there's a lot of other things in here. I mean, you talk about safety, you can talk about safety, we have two mid-block crosswalks, which are unheard of practically in our state, which are, which are, which is a safety issue, and they're not lit, there's, there's no lighting on them. There's a lot of things, I think, when we start looking at the infrastructure that we have downtown, it has to take a lot to change to move this forward, I think there's a lot of expense that needs to take place to get us even to a point of doing that. But, but on the other side, I just don't think that, I mean, that is a safety, the safety side of it, the other side of it, I just don't think that for the character of our community, the character of our downtown, I don't see that it adds to it. I think there's a very small benefit that does not, when you look at the risk versus the reward, the reward to me is very small. I think the risk is a lot greater. I mean, that is just, that's how I feel about it.
And just, because again, both of you kinda brought up the timeframe discussion, and again, I think it is an important point, this is a discussion item, it is not something that is required to have action this evening, or, or even a month from now, or, again, I don't want anybody to feel that tonight, we've had these two hearings, and now you have to, you have to make a decision one way or the other this evening.
Well, it's
My only, my only, okay, well, I'm sorry if I misled, my only feeling was, is, once again, when there is a step to be going forward, it needs to be shared on the front end versus creating something.
What you want the public to hear right now is either we're gonna push and have some kinda ordinance, or we're not, or you, 'cause see, to me
Or we're gonna, or we're gonna wait. I don't want you to feel like, right, I'm not trying to sell you a timeshare, I mean, I, the Council doesn't need to like, know this, write this. If Council as a whole is not ready to make a decision, or to make a decision in one way or the other, and I don't wanna rob Council the benefit of time and reflection.
May I comment?
Yes, please do.
Typically, if you're gonna make a decision as to an important direction, you don't just have it on the agenda for a discussion, because I would think that some people that are against it or for it would say, well, I looked at the agenda, and they're just gonna discuss it, they're not gonna take any action.
Right.
So, I mean, you know, I may be stepping out of my role, but to take action tonight prohibits those who relied on the wording of the agenda from having a voice in whatever that action may be.
So, I get your point, I agree with that, the, so again, let's get back into the mechanics of it then. So, the next logical step from a Council perspective would be what?
Be to give me direction, to draft an ordinance, or not. But that does not require a Council vote. I mean, I would say the majority of the ordinance, you know, I've been City Attorney since nineteen-seventy-fifth. The majority of the ordinances that I've been involved in drafting came from a telephone call from the city manager, a telephone call from the mayor. Hardly ever, I don't remember a single council, an individual council member calling me and asking me to draft an ordinance. If they did, I would say, well, you kinda need to talk to the mayor or the city manager, but usually there's some consensus that tells me to draft an ordinance. But my point, if, if you're gonna take action, put it on your agenda so people know you're gonna do it.
Okay.
Transparency.
And that was the whole point of why we've done this the last two, again, the, the deal that, it wasn't really a deal, but what I'd, what I'd asked Council to do when the pub crawl ordinance got put in with the open container, it was my idea to separate out and go, hey, let's not try to take something that's gonna go on in perpetuity with a pub crawl ordinance. The real issue here is the walk-around alcohol at the entertainment district. And so I said, let's approve the entertainment, let's approve what we did in March for the pub crawl, to get that out of the way, so they can have their event, and we'll go from there. With the caveat, because again, Council went along with it, 'cause Council could've very well just said no and passed the ordinance that would've let them go on in perpetuity. I felt it needed more discussion, so, again, and speaking with Council, we said, let's have this event here with the caveat that we're gonna, again, we've had this on the table for two years, let's have the discussion, and as long as it's done publicly and, and with, with public input, and that Council creates this, then, or after we have this for two meetings, then Council can decide what they want to do if anything. And so that's how we've gotten to this point. So, again, my point was, if Council just tonight doesn't want, again, they're, they're not under a constraint to make a decision tonight, but I also think it would be unfair to this whole process if, at our next Council meeting, we've got an ordinance drafted that we want to talk about, and then we've kind of done it, and maybe you're saying that's, maybe you're saying I'm wrong, and that the process should, should actually be that way.
What about, say, the next meeting? Put on the published agenda that there will be a vote taken on that issue as to whether to go forward or not. Don't waste money on me drafting an ordinance, but, you know, of course, I need the money, you understand that?
We've already drafted one, you wanting to charge us for the next one?
Well, keep that. As you said, it, it did not have what needs to be in an ordinance, it didn't have, it didn't have boundaries, it didn't have hours, so, you know, there's time to be spent if you want me to do it. But I think for transparency sake,
Yes, that's what I don't want.
You just put it on the next agenda, and then you're gonna have a room full of people who have an interest in it. But right now, I think there are people who have an interest in it that aren't here because they didn't get noticed that you're gonna take action. I say it again, transparency.
And I would say, in my fourteen years of being on, I mean, nowhere near as long as you've been City Attorney, but we've never voted in a Council meeting to then have an ordinance. I, I was under the impression that we would talk a month, not to be not public, because obviously, if we decide that there's gonna be an ordinance, it's gonna be in the paper that's going to the Alcohol Control Board, then it will come back here, and there's technically three meetings that the public can show up in addition to these two meetings. But if that's what we wanna do for this time, that's perfectly fine with me too, it's just, you know.
I think it speaks to the level of importance on this topic. And like I said, I have, I have my feelings on it, but at this point, they really don't matter, and if Council decides to move in one direction or the other, I have ideas on how to level the sand and to make it as, as palatable, again, and be, I'm all about win-wins, and so, again, I think there's always a level of balance, and we always try to work to have that. It's hard to find balance when either it's gonna exist or it's not going to exist. But that, I mean, that's kinda where I am, again, I think it speaks to the level of importance of this particular topic.
Okay, so, thinking and taking David's advice, next Council meeting, we'll all sit in here and listen to people speak for or against it, and then we will all vote that yes, we want to have an ordinance or not, then it'll go to the Alcohol Control Board, then it'll come back to us in two more.
My preference would be is if Council wanted to decide to move forward with it, 'cause the second part of this was that this would be something that we
No reason to go to the Alcohol Control Board.
That, no, we'd still go through that, but as far as the, the original provisions and stipulations, that we would do what we're elected to do, which is to make those policy decisions, and to what it, what it might contain, and that gives an opportunity for people that may or may not be for it, for people that are for it to, to create something, or, and people that may not be for it, to at least try to protect those interests and try to limit, or to at least have a piece of it, and everybody's equally unhappy.
Yeah, on what Jason said, he's right, and I can't give you a specific example of when this Council has ever voted to tell me to draft an ordinance, as I said a while ago, this, you know, I'm not saying
I'm all about breaking new ground.
I'm not saying there's precedent for it, there's not, and, but, you know, I mean, I'm just a hired gun, and I'll do whatever y'all tell me to do, okay?
Absolutely. Are y'all fine with, with taking a couple weeks and then having a formal vote, or how do y'all wanna proceed? Again, I don't, I don't vote unless there's a tie, you guys tell me what you want, and we'll go from there.
What I wanna see is an ordinance that shows the days, the times, the map, I mean, how can we sit there and talk about going forward with something without something being in front of us to talk about? So, for me, I would like for y'all to come up with something for us to look at and tweak and do whatever to decide whether we
I'm fine with that, if y'all just tell me to do it right now.
I don't think we should spend the city's money on having the ordinance drawn up, I mean, so, I mean, that's where I'm at, so, I mean,
Well, I mean, Matt, you just wanna poll the Council right now and just be done with? I mean, I
You're the great McGary, personally.
The call down to, are you asking him for an ordinance? No, Mayor, uh, City Manager.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Does the call down to you, or the City Manager, asking the City Attorney to draft an ordinance?
That would not be unusual. It's typical.
Mr. Mayor, he's in the press room, so I'm just gonna go ahead and say right now, I'm a great McGary, I would like to have something in front of me before I start passing judgment on which way I wanna go with things, but I might excuse myself a little bit.
Sure.
I think y'all would agree with that.
Say that again?
I agree with what he said, please, something in front of us to
All right, so, so then what I am hearing, well, what is it?
I'm having a real hard time hearing, so where are we at, please?
Both Councilman Ren and Councilman Cooley, along with Councilman Fox, have said they would like to see something tangible in front of them for them to consider whether or not they would be in favor of it or not.
Yes, sir, that is my agreement as well, and if, I'm given just a little bit of time under the circumstances, I'm dealing with personally, I'll get an email over to Keith or to Mr. Archer, and give them my input to see where we are once that, once that ordinance gets written, and then we can hash out a little further, so I'm in agreement with that.
Councilman Stepp, what say you?
Well, I mean, that was sort of, ultimately, I know that that's how it's always been, we, there was a, there was an ordinance that could be drafted, we would massage it, and then ultimately, then we'd vote yes or no to it. I, I'm pretty sure Kerry's very obvious with, you know, where his stance is, I think everybody else is a little more gray, so, yes, I agree with them, and I'm not, and I didn't want the public to perceive it, what I was trying to say is, trying to say, hey, we're gonna do this behind doors, and then we're just gonna show you an ordinance, I think that was the process for the fourteen, fifteen years I've been here, is that we'll, it'll go towards the Alcohol Control Board, every citizen gets to speak and say what they wanna say, the Alcohol Control Board will massage it, then it'll come to us, we'll have a first reading, and then we'll have our second reading, and we will vote, and it'll either be yes or no, or some version of that, and that's what I was going for, and I didn't want it to be mis, misshrewed that I was trying to do something behind the scenes.
And if, and if my comments kind of led people in a direction, then I apologize, that was not what I was trying to
But I mean, I mean, I agree, put, you know, I think we've already got some version of it, but let, let's get something in front of us so that we can say, no, we don't like that, yes, we like these parts of it, or, we don't want it at all.
Well, I think that, I, from my understanding, is that that's what this discussion was, and what Mayor was saying, hey, let's have a discussion, let's see what the community, where the community's at in it, and let them, let them share where they're at, and I think that's what we've done, I mean, we've seen emails, we've seen public opinion here, we've seen, heard public, you know.
And I, and I'll say
Their thing, and so
We have heard, I would say, ninety-nine percent negative, but we've, and not, and I appreciate everybody coming, but I've got tons of texts and emails and phone calls, and those people aren't here. So, what I'm saying, that, that ten or twelve people, or fifteen people's comments don't matter, but there's other people saying stuff too, they're just not right here.
They have the opportunity to come.
That's right.
I mean, we, we have an opportunity to come, so, I mean, that's, I mean, it's like saying four hundred people on Facebook, like, we don't know those four hundred people are even citizens of our city, you know, there's, there's, I mean, so you can take
But I'm just saying, there's two sides of this, not just one
Right, so, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, like, tonight, though, I mean, Mayor said, let's have an open discussion time to see where we wanna go on this ordinance, and if he's asking that question, then I say, no, I don't think we need to proceed and pay Mr. Archer to, to move and pay Mr. Archer to, to move on the ordinance. Now, that's fine, if you, if you say you want to proceed, that's fine, I understand that. And, and my understanding is from the mayor. Mayor is the, if I have an ordinance right now that I, that I've written, that I have on my computer right now, mayor says, I'm not going to push that, then I'm not bringing it, and you know what ordinance I'm talking about, and I'm not brought it now, I guess, I mean, by Mr. Archer's words, I, I probably won't go to Keith and say, hey, will you work on this, because I don't have the, you know, the backing of the mayor, so, you know, you know, or the backing, or the backing of the council, so I'm not going to do that. So, but, so, in that vein, in that interest, I'm saying, no, mayor, I, I'm saying, I don't, I don't think we, that this is a right ordinance for us as our city and the character of our community that we need to proceed with. And that's, that's, you know, that, if that's what we're doing here right now, if that's what we're doing here right now, and we're, and we're having that discussion, and he's asking, hey, council, what do you want to do, then that's where I'm at.
Yeah.
And so, now, if you do come with a, if you do come with, if mayor says, I think I got consensus with the council, and he comes with an ordinance, then we'll go from that. But I've got to take a stand somewhere and say, you know, now.
And, and so, again, at the beginning of the process, I don't want to be redundant, so I asked everybody not to repeat themselves, and I'll repeat myself. At the beginning of this, I said, two, we'll have two meetings, public input, give everybody an opportunity to hear where, where council is, and then, council, y'all tell me what you want to do, okay? And so, in my mind, from hearing from all six council members tonight, I hear five people that say they would like to see something, and I hear one that, that would rather not. So, at the beginning of the, I think we've fulfilled what that obligation is, the deal that, you know, that we had, was that we're going to do this publicly, you're going to hear from the public, and from there, you guys give the direction of how you want, if you even want to pursue it. It sounds to me that the consensus of council would like to at least see something to consider. And so, with that being the case, that's, that's what we'll do. And I will tell you that what I'll do is, again, I will take the input that we've gotten and try to come up with something that's going to make not everybody equally unhappy, but something that will, and I, and I will work, I'll certainly work with everybody on this council to make sure that there's something that has provisions in it that will capture a lot of the comments that have been made over the last few weeks about litter and safety, and some things that we can do about that, limiting hours, taking a look at the geographic space of it. I had a conversation with Ms. Reed earlier in the week that I think is a very good provision to put in it, where a lot of cities pass these for a twelve-month period, and so that every year, the discussion comes back up whether to renew it or not, which gives you the opportunity that you're not having something in perpetuity, so that the discussion is had every year. I do think the boundaries of it that were up there are entirely too large, and I can go through the, the things that have been bouncing around my head for the last three weeks on this, but I didn't share them, because again, if council decided not to move forward with it, I'm, I'm not advocating on either side for this. This was the head nod that I needed, and so from this point forward, I will, I will begin the process of putting parameters, and I'll share them with Dan, and I'll, I'll share them with all of council, and I'll probably share them publicly as well, but, and we can, and we can go from there. Is that, that sounds to me, based on our discussion and our conversation, that that's what council wants to do, and that's how I will proceed.
And then for everybody to know, it will still, there'll still be more public comment once that comes out, during public meetings.
Again, my commitment at the beginning was that it would be open, it would be public, and that people would have an opportunity for input, and we'll continue to do that, it'll go before, after we get it to where it needs to be, we'll send it to, it, it's a public document, it will go to the alcohol control board for consideration. Alcohol control board may change it, amend it, make it less restrictive, more restrictive. Obviously, if I write it, it will be perfect on the first draft, but then when it comes to us, it will have two, there'll be two readings, and again, the opportunity for it to be amended by council, and it may be made more restrictive, and it may be made whatever the will of council is, and then we'll go from there. If it, if it's three to three, then I get my way, and if it goes a different way, then I don't get my way. Any other discussion from council? Thank you, and thank you to everybody for being here and for your input and participation, and that will continue. Is there any other business that needs to come for council this evening? There being none?
No, he already thanked the, the works and all, so, thank you.
Very good. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Stay gold. Get her out of that guy.